All right, we're gonna call this meeting with the City Council order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At least I remembered it this time.
I was saying loud.
All right, we'll move on to roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mizony?
Here.
Councilmember Palfini?
Here.
Councilmember Tavallaro?
Here.
Mayor Parham?
Present. All right, now we'll move on to the acceptance of agenda and emergency items.
No, do I, don't I do that at the beginning of the consent agenda? David?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I move to accept the agenda.
Agenda. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any, now we're moving on to non-agenda public comments. Do we have any public comments? Please understand that no action can be taken at this time. No public comment. All right, seeing as there is none, we will move on. Councilmember announcements, meeting reports, and comments. And we'll start with Councilmember Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report this month. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Mizony?
I guess I'll let you talk about the Lola meeting. It's the first one I've made, about three or four of them, but, and it was good. But I'll let you, sure you got a better understanding of it. But one other thing I want to bring up, though, has been brought to my attention from just even me looking around at the building. We need to maybe pay attention to the building for some of the leaks that have been going on in here, and we don't want it to get any worse than it is. And I know that's gonna be a very expensive agenda, but we need to do something. This, it's an old building, it's got some issues, it's had issues when I worked here, they're getting worse, and I think we need to address that somehow. We need to do it, and only professionals can tell us what that cost will be, but it needs to be done, and we need to work on that. Or we can find a grant and build a brand-new city hall, or you can move it over there in the crowded library.
Library.
But I'm just saying, it needs to be addressed, and that's just for the safety of everybody that's in this building. But that's it for me.
All right, Councilmember Tavallaro?
I do have something to say. I did not have a transportation committee meeting this month, but there's some good stuff happening with that, so I'll have a report for next month. So, we get a lot of complaints here to our city council about buildings in town and homes in town that are bad, and we need to do something about them. And I have a plea to the public about selling your building or your home to our local slumlords. There's only so much that we can do, but if that continues to happen, then we can't stop it. And that's, I'm all done. That's all I have to say about that.
Mayor Protem Palfini?
I would just like, that's not, that's not a very big stool that you stood on in there, but I do agree with it totally. I went to several meetings, one was C2C, which I'll leave it at that, Call Your Interpretive Center. We are attempting to produce a walkway around the facility with signage, where they've received a grant to do that with. I find that a very positive move. We've made a more permanent addition to our personnel, which also should be a very positive mood in keeping the place open a little more consistently. I would venture to tell people that we approach about seventeen to eighteen hundred visits per month. That's a lot of people that float through there, and if people want to advertise, if businesses want to advertise up there, there's opportunity. And if the city needs to maybe take a look again at participating and helping fund that site, we've done so in the past, to me, might want to consider that out of TOT funds. It's not a great amount. I think we normally used to contribute about a thousand dollars a year, which I think the total budget for the place is about thirty-five. So it's just a small little portion. I know, just to put a note on that, the city of Wayrica contributes about seven thousand, I think it is. So, anyway, went to that, there was progress, progress. I like to speak highly of it, but it, sometimes we suffer a little. I also attended Lola last night, and I'll let Daryl speak on most of Lola, but we did do a city, what's called the City Select Committee, which is in charge of LAFCO, air quality control, it's the local transportation commission. I would like to say that Mark stepped up, he's gonna be on the LAFCO Committee, which is local area formation committee, so if people want to be annexed, there could be some potential for us if it's out there. So I wanted to thank Mark for stepping up with that. What is the last one? Oh, I'd like to report kind of a very positive note, and I'll probably bring it forward later, is that the senior lunch program, we budgeted originally for about seventy people a week. We were off by about twenty, so we're getting somewhere in the neighborhood of about ninety to ninety-five folks per week, which we, we do, we do exercise in the morning, we do a lunch, and then we do bingo. Our bingo consists of over thirty people attending, so it's, it's a bad, it's good for them. I think a lot of people are expressing the fact that it's not so much the food, they come for the socialization aspect of it all, so that's been a very positive thing. And I think the Rec Department's been very positive with this as well. So, end of my report.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmembers, for your report. As far as Lola goes, I want to thank the city staff for putting on another Lola, so close to the last one, was done very well. We had a pretty full presence there, and thank you to everybody from the staff that came and attended. The entire council was present, a lot of good information from the cities that made it, and, you know, and we're fortunate that we have a lot of positive growth here in the city of Weed compared to a lot of our neighboring towns and cities around the county, and that's a very positive thing, and hopefully we can move forward with and continue the continuous improvement. And that's all I've got for the month. So, we'll move on now to our next item, which is a presentation from the Siskiyou Economic Development Council.
Good afternoon and thank you. My name is Tanya Douse, and I'm with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. I'm joined this afternoon by my colleague, Jason Young, and we definitely appreciate this opportunity to talk a little bit about our work. So, we have been working with the city of Weed for many years now to support your economic development efforts and to try to add capacity where we can. Okay, do I have to start over?
No.
Please don't. The work that we do, we, well, let me just take it back for a second, I'll just go through this really briefly, and many of you already know our history, but we were formed as a nonprofit because the city of Weed, the city of Wayrica, and the city of Montague originally got, came together and wanted to create an organization that could work in support of economic development, because none of the jurisdictions had the budget within their own means to field an economic development staff. So, that's actually how we started. Since then, we've been chugging along for years, trying to support you and the work that you need us to do, and we do that through a memorandum of understanding that is actually supported by all of the jurisdictions in Siskiyou County, and each of the jurisdictions make a financial contribution to us on an annual basis. We use that to provide the basic funding, the seed money, if you will, for all that we do. And I think you're kind of familiar, but Jason and I would like to just share a little recap of some of our work, and obviously, we're here also to hear from you and to answer any questions that you have. So, through this memorandum of understanding, we try, we work closely with the city managers, very closely with the city managers and other members of your staff, to identify shared priorities, if you will, and we kind of lump them into about three categories. There's the working directly with businesses within our communities to help them be successful. We work on what we call development readiness, or helping our communities get ready for opportunities in development, and then just basically adding capacity. Some of the programs that we operate underneath these priorities are the Small Business Development Center. In the last year, we've served, directly served, and this means that we have, we're working one-on-one with the small businesses. We have one hundred and twenty-nine active clients right now across Siskiyou County, and eleven of those small businesses are within the city of Weed, providing over four hundred hours of direct technical assistance. Through the Small Business Development Center, we can help a business work directly with anything from HR to QuickBooks to marketing to pretty much anything that a business, anything that they would need support with. If we can't offer it directly through our staff, then we get them, hook them up with an expert consultant to help them better their business. We also operate a program called Siskiyou Farm Co., and we have producers who are making and growing local food products, selling their products over an online marketplace called Siskiyou Farm Co. And we underwrite the online marketplace, the delivery, the distribution, and the promotion of that work. It's really kind of in its very beginning stages. We've been out there for about a year, testing market and developing it, but the whole point is to help businesses find and expand their opportunities for market. We also operate a brownfields program, and we've done at least three sites in the city of Weed. The, what we do with the brownfields program is we go in and we look at a property that may or may not have a contaminant present, but help address any remediation or environmental issues that are present on that site, so it could be prepared for development. Most recently, we did brownfields work underneath the charging station, the Tesla charging station. There've been a handful of other projects, like I said, but I am just trying to call your attention to one here in the city of Weed. I'd like to, and I've been around a long time, so I can talk about other projects. I know you guys are familiar that, of our work that, in supporting South Weed and the development and all that kind of stuff, but I'm gonna turn the mic to my colleague Jason for a minute to talk a little bit about some of the work that he can highlight.
One second here. There we go. So, I'm gonna, we also run Discover Siskiyou, which comes from two percent of assessment on the hotels per room stay, and that goes into a collective fund for the county, but then we use those funds to market all the jurisdictions. And so like, one of the things that we've done this year for Weed is that we've taken twelve thousand dollars of that and put it towards your events that you've had, like the rolling car show, rolling weed car show, weed carnival-y, and use that to help market, to draw people into town, heads and beds. And also, Richard Dinges had reached out and asked for a new website, or was looking for help to try to design a new website for the Weed Chamber, so we were able to allocate thirty-five hundred dollars and put that towards your new Weed Chamber website, and we worked hand-in-hand to help them develop that through Pusher down out of Donsmere, to provide you a better site. And then, you know, some of the other things that we've been able to do with those funds that we use for Discover Siskiyou is we just took over the Film Commission seat, so we are now the official Film Commissioner. I know you're starting a pilot for a show here. Also, since we've taken over, we already have another show that's interested in coming to Weed in October and doing an episodic series out of the outdoor school area, and so we're working right now and trying to make that happen. And then we've also taken over Cycle Siskiyou, so Cycle Siskiyou promoting cycling in Siskiyou. You have a lot of the Siskiyou Centuries and things that come through your town, so we're gonna be helping to promote that, draw heads and beds, try to get people to stay here in the area. And then, one of the other things that we do is data analytics, that we use a company called Placer, so actually, I helped the fire department just recently, you had a grant that came up, and he needed data analytics of visits and stays. We use that to help do that. You know, like, for example, you pulled up the Call Your, you mentioned something about the Call Your Rest area, I pulled it up on my phone, because it's an app that I can use, and the fifteen hundred visits that you were talking about per month, that's from what they sign in. There's actually eleven thousand visitors that come through there per month, so.
I didn't want to overexaggerate. I seriously, I didn't really know the number, but I knew it was over a thousand, so I just threw one out.
So what's cool is we use these analytics for different things for a lot of the companies. We can use it for business attraction of any company that's interested in coming into the area. We can use it for business clients, you know, those SBDC clients that we were talking about, those eleven. This is all free advice that we provide for those individuals, so when they come in, they're not paying anything, and we can provide them professional services and analytics and those kinds of things. So, that's what we're providing on the Discover Siskiyou side through the EDC.
So, I would just sum it up by saying, on the horizon, we see some priorities kind of starting to emerge, and as I mentioned, we work really closely with the city managers, and Tim comes to regular meetings with us, shares with us your priorities, and we try to do the best we can to incorporate them into our work plan, and sometimes we can, and sometimes we can't. One thing that's emerging is a real strong interest in the four cities located on the I-5, having a strategy that's unique to them. And so this is kind of an exciting opportunity to see this level of collaboration happening amongst our city jurisdictions. I think that we talked to you previously, I feel like just a couple months ago, Cory and Heather were here, and there was a discussion about, we did a project in Wayrica to support the Main Street rehabilitation work, and the project was really just targeted at providing some financial assistance to the businesses who were disrupted from that work, and she said that emerged in that conversation, so we're here if we can help with that side-up sort of a strategy. The other thing that I think is interesting on the horizon for us is, we have been named a climate collaborative, and I know this kind of sounds weird, right, because we're a business organization, and the work we do is really about supporting small businesses, but we believe the state's gonna continue to make its strong investments in climate resiliency and climate response work. And so if we can bring that to our businesses through the lens of how do our businesses become more resilient, how do they adapt, evolve, and respond to climate issues, but maybe more importantly, how do they tap into that funding? So, I think that was all. We didn't want to take too much of your time, but we're here, too, to answer any questions and/or hear any thoughts that you have.
Questions from the council?
I only have the thought, I have about ten thoughts going through my head, I'll just have to contact you later regarding, you mentioned a couple things, how you provided some assistance for websites. One of the things that Call Your does suffer from, if you pulled up their website.
That's something we can look at.
Yeah, it's absolutely horrible. I have attempted to get them to go to Pusher, but they've been a little bit resistant because of costs, and the budget is not that big up there. So, again, so that's one of my first leniency, and although that's not the city of Weed, it does directly impact, or can directly impact, the city of Weed through visits and promotion, and that goes throughout the whole county, but, anyway, that was my thought.
Would the state's climate, whatever they have, can we get a new snowplow?
That's a really good question. So, we're in the early stages of this, but I'm gonna write it down, and we're gonna look into it. So the point is, remember, our work is climate through the lens of business, but it opens the door to funding for other projects, because they can check the box that we have a climate collaborative, so.
Craig, do you need a snowplow?
I always think of it.
I'm always thinking about you. We'll start with one. Why don't, I'm always confused on that climate talk, so, can I have a snowplow? That's climate.
It's affected by climate. So, first off, I'd like to thank you both and your organization for the work you do, not just as a council member and a resident, but also as a business owner and a member of the chamber, I see the impact of your work here in Weed and throughout the county, and it's very much appreciated, you know, by everybody. I had a couple of questions in regard, one, with the climate potential funding, something I think that would be worthwhile to look at for local businesses in Weed, especially the small businesses, would be any kind of resiliency with power generation, whether it would be wind power or solar power, you know, to help them offset their business-operating costs, so we can keep some of our small businesses open, you know, longer term. We see a turnover constantly all throughout the county of businesses opening and closing within four or five years, and things like that, I think, would be a good, a good start for that program. The other thing I really had a question on is, and this may be an offline thing due to time, I know there's a lot of work for promotion and supporting existing businesses, but are there programs for potential businesses, especially smaller businesses, that, you know, would inhabit buildings on Main Street, as an example, or Weed Boulevard, to help those entrepreneurs or people looking to expand into a commercial space, so that they can grow their business and support, you know, not just Weed, but other communities throughout the county where those businesses may be located? I see a lot of businesses, I had conversations with a couple of small business owners just today, that operate out of their homes or out of shared facilities, and I'm very curious to maybe talk some more, or, you know, look at that aspect to help, you know, not just with heads and beds, but businesses and buildings, to kind of get those people out of their garages or, you know, shared spaces and into downtown storefronts.
Well, that's where the SBDC side, that's where the SBDC side comes in, that we operate, because we can actually use that free counseling and things like that to work with them, to help them set up the loans they might need, or help them set up those kinds of things, and understand the marketing processes, and understand the business process, the QuickBooks, and what's required for, you know, setting up the building and those kinds of things. So that's what all those advisors that we have, we have access to, is for that. So we do a lot of business starts. We just helped Bill Roberson, he just opened a bike shop in Wayrica, and we did a lot of work with him, and Pyroclastic Chocolates is another one. I know she's working out of her home, but she's now doing a storefront, putting a storefront in, so, yes, we, you know, those are the kinds of things that we can do, they just have to sign up.
It's killing me not to say something, you know. The power generation, so what, that is definitely within the context of helping businesses be climate resilient, so, yes, to that.
I would definitely like to meet with you offline and have more discussions on that. Being as I own a technology business, I think there's some insights there to help support other businesses with that. All right, well, any other questions?
One last thing, is there a workspace up in Wayrica? Do you know what I'm talking about? Where you actually have a central location where people can go in and do a business or look at how they can operate their business?
Well, we have, we have our offices at fifteen-twelve South Oregon, and that's where we meet with clients personally, we can actually meet with them in person, and we can always, a lot of times, we'll actually travel to whatever destination to work with them. I travel throughout the county to meet with them, to understand what they want to do, and those kinds of things, and then put them in touch with the advisors, if that's what you're talking about.
I'll get back to you on it. You were talking about workspace one time, but that's okay, I can get back to you. I'll get my thoughts clear on that. It's okay. And are you up there every day or through the week in your office, or are you out and about most of the time?
We are, somebody's usually in the office Monday through Friday, but our team is mostly out and about. So, as Jason pointed out, we believe it's important to be out in the field, in our communities, meeting with businesses. We're usually kind of covert, but we're out there.
Right, well, like Mayor Parham said, I'd like to sit down and get more information on it, so I can educate myself, because what you're saying is awesome. I mean, there's this, that thing is open, and it could be endless, so I need to educate myself on what you guys do, what you can do, so I'd like to set up a meeting sometime, and you have a phone number?
You're always welcome to, and I will give you my cellphone.
We can do it afterwards, okay?
I'm gonna read it into the public record.
Tanya, you addressed the financial support for the small businesses on Highway Three. We will be having that same type of construction in twenty-seven? So, we will definitely be needing that assistance for all of our small businesses on the Boulevard, because they'll be coming from the central Weed exit and going up ninety-seven, and doing the same type of concrete construction on the roadways, so.
You bet, and we have a model already in place, and we'll, by then, we'll have, we'll know what doesn't work, and we will make sure that Weed's better. But I will tell you, too, that one of the things we also did, that Main Street project is, early on, the council in Wayrica was having a really hard time making additional investment in the project, so we helped by doing some economic analysis that would demonstrate the taxes that would come directly to the jurisdiction based on construction of the project. And so I'm gonna say that, because it's actually a relatively, we don't do it, we go to an economist to do it, but it's actually a relatively straightforward thing to do if you want that level of analysis for your decision-making, happy to do it.
All right, well. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, now we'll go on to the consent agenda.
You're on, Sue.
I know, but I'm falling apart.
You want me to do it?
No. Yeah, no, I got it. I would like to add Resolution zero-nine-dash-two-zero-two-four to the consent agenda. Is that good, David?
Yeah, that relates to Item E, sorry.
Item E.
Seven E, which is simply the resolution which will approve the 2024 Weed Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy and reaffirm the ordinance. That's all.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any comments?
Did you get those notes sent in?
Discussion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, no comments or concerns, let's put it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Also, motion, the amended consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, unanimous consent. Okay, there are no items removed from consent, we will move on to council business, starting with Item A, Human Resources. By motion, council will consider approval of Resolution Number zero-eight-two thousand twenty-four, a resolution of intention to enter into an amended contract with Calpers to provide a five-thousand-dollar retirement death benefit.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and council, before you tonight with this resolution, as we discussed earlier, last summer, the POA negotiated to have an optional benefit offered by Calpers of a five-thousand-dollar death benefit, like a five-thousand-dollar life insurance policy, and there's a lot of hoops and things you gotta jump through with Calpers in order to make this modification to our current contract with Calpers, and before you tonight is this resolution of intention to approve the contract before, between the Board of the Calpers Retirement System and the city of Weed to provide a five-thousand-dollar death benefit for our employees.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No questions from here.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number zero-eight-dash-two-zero-two-four.
Second.
Okay, before we vote, is there any public comment? Seeing as there is no public, and there are no further comments from the council, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries by unanimous consent. All right, council business, Item B, Human Resources. By motion, council will consider the introduction and first reading of the Ordinance Number four-seven-three-two thousand twenty-four, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement Systems.
This is the adoption of the ordinance, as was discussed before in the first reading.
Seeing as there is no public, we'll move on. Councilmembers, any discussion or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve this first reading of Ordinance four-seven-three-dash-two thousand twenty-four, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to unanimous consent. We'll move on to Item Ten, which is staff reports, and we'll start with Chief Duncan.
Good evening, I do have a few things. We have started our annual building inspections. We started right here at the Mercantile, we're gonna work, this building's actually next, since that one's closed. Gonna work our way down Main Street, back up Main Street. our way down Main Street, back up Main Street, and then, we should've started in South Weed, because we started at the mercantile, and that was crazy, but, so, you know, we're making sure everybody's compliant. I actually, I take that back, I started with Darrell's building, because I was very curious to see what a 3D printer looked like, because I'd never seen one, and I did go in there and inspect that, and it was very nice, the printers were pretty cool, I did write them up for a few things, so, he's corrected them, hey, is what it is, but, make sure everybody's compliant.
I, I, from a businessperson, appreciate actually the fire department going in and inspect, it's something that doesn't, isn't done in other communities, if you won't believe that.
Thank you. So, you see our trucks out there at different buildings, that's why we're doing inspections. We do have two new volunteers, our recruitment and retention officer that we got on the FEMA grant, recruited them from the EMT class, and he has maybe two more interested from the EMT class. Along with getting those new volunteers, we also have, they're getting fitted for new sets of turnouts, you know, turnouts cost $5,000 apiece, and it's all paid for by the grant, by the FEMA grant that we have, for the recruitment and retention officer, so, that's a positive thing. We put two people through confined space tech class through the FEMA grant, it's all paid for by that, because we have training in that grant, and we do have five sleeper, or not sleepers, volunteers that are in EMT class right now, they're paid by themselves for that, so, we don't pay for that. Two of them went to Arizona to take it, it's like a three-week-long class, so, they're gone right now, it's in Mesa, actually. We did turn in our AFG grant through Lexipol, they wrote the grant for us, for the extractor and dryer, we had to take the air compressor off, because FEMA will not fund any single-source fire department for an air compressor this year, they will only fund a regional one, which means everybody in the region has to go in, put the air compressor in one department, and all use it, so they wouldn't do a single-source, we had to take that off our grant, so, this is the value of having a grant-writing company, because we would've wasted our time, because we would've put that in there, and we got denied right away, so, hopefully we get the commercial washer and dryer, though, which would be good, because we don't have a dryer right now, so our turnouts have to hang in the bays to dry. And I'm also exploring, I just got notice of a grant, actually, CalFire sent it to me, it's not a CalFire grant, it's a grants.gov, which I've never put in a grant from them before, but they're doing grants right now for, it's like a drop-in pump unit that goes in the back of your truck, which would actually fit on this new truck we're looking at, and that, they go up to $5 million, so, I don't have all the details on it yet, because it just came out, but I'm exploring writing this grant. The first thing we had to fix was the UEI number, so that's fixed, thank Jill for that and Tim, fixed that number for us, so, I will be coming to you, there's no city match whatsoever for that grant, so, that would be good.
Excellent, well, definitely appreciate the inspections, I think that's a good thing, not just for the business owners, but the community at large, to make sure that all of our businesses are safe and compliant.
And if anybody asks, we do inspect the fire station, too, just so you know.
Good. So, the thing that fills with the air, the air compressor thing?
Air compressor, yeah.
Does somebody in the county have an up-to-date new one?
I think that's, no. College.
Oh.
Has one.
Cool, so people can go use theirs.
I can't, I can't be sure on that 100%, because it closed a lot, but I don't know if anybody in the county has one that can fill 5,500 PSI bottles yet.
You think the college has one?
I think college has a new one, yeah.
Okay, well, and that's central to the.
But, knowing that, we can put in a, for a regional one next year.
Yeah.
Which would be good.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Director Porterfield.
Pretty much status quo, the only thing that we're starting to look at is different softwares that we can convert. Started that process, I forwarded on invites to demos, if you didn't get one and you want one, let me know, I'm happy, it's, but, it's a Zoom demo, just log on your computer, you can, if you're interested in how the software is working, I'm hoping to look at at least three different kinds and price them out before I make a decision on that. About the same, just moving forward.
All right, Director Sharp.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Would you tell, I'm sure, unless you did it yourself, would you tell your workers thank you for filling those two holes right there? Thank you.
They're patching right now, in between storms.
Well, I know, they told me, they told me this morning they were gonna go patch, and I go, eh, a little cold for that, but they said, we got something for cold.
You know what, Craig, too, I missed it, to tell you guys, to tell your crew, and I called one of them up, during those storms, you guys, and the police department, of course, you guys were out and about, I watched you go up and down, at least the boulevards and mine, and I, you know, usually, old habits are hard, I went out, took a ride around town, and everything was taken care of, so you guys, this team did a good job on that, so, I just wanted to let you guys know, people out there are seeing that, just, they may not say it, but I've been getting some calls, and some atta boys at the stores and things, so, thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass it on.
Chief Mayberry.
I can't remember if we talked about this last meeting, but we had two in backgrounds to fill the two vacant spots, one of them didn't pass backgrounds, one of them did, they will be starting hopefully next week, so that'll get us up to eight. Our vehicle should be, the, the most recently purchased vehicle, we're hoping to be in service soon, it's down getting outfitted finally, we were in line behind other agencies, they picked that up about a week ago, hopefully we'll get that in service, and then, other than that, I don't have anything, I just want to say, pause up to Weed High School basketball, three of the teams are playing for championships, two of them for outright undefeated, so, go get them tomorrow, so, if you're available, go watch some good basketball.
That's at the college?
It's at the college tomorrow night versus Mount Shasta, and you have to buy your tickets online.
Wait, I have a question for you.
Okay.
You have eight, when the new person comes on?
When the new person starts, they'll take, they'll take about, typically on average, it's about four months before they can be on their own.
How many will make you happy?
Nine is full.
Okay, cool.
And if we, we talked about this before, going back to the city plan, the newest one, it was recommended that we go to 10 once South Weed starts developing any further, so, just because of the calls for service out there, we're, we're averaging between incidents on, on any given day, 60, some days is more, snow days in particular, we're averaging over 100 incidents a day, so.
How did it go with Caltrans and snow and trucks and, you know?
It's, it's the same, we're, this, this crew's different this year than the one that was there last year, so they're a little bit better and not, but they still are directing them off the freeway, because people are driving past the chain-up area without the chains, so then they have to get off the freeway, and Caltrans cannot tell them to get back on, they're being directed down, we cannot have them on the city streets while they're trying to plow, so, we are having to station somebody there ourselves, and say, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to go back and get in line in the chain-up area, just so we can keep our streets clear and they can continue to plow.
So do you have a guy out there for hours at a time and rotating?
Oh, yeah, a snowstorm is a minimum, two people, a heavy snowstorm is, in heavy traffic, can, can take as many as four at a time, like, well, it depends what happens, if we get an accident on 97, that's, that's a two-person minimum, with, with the way it ends up being out there, so, I mean, you've got multiple things happening around town, it, it, it's a dynamic situation, so.
Guys do good.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No report.
Not even a little one?
Yeah, just a couple updates, first, just keeping you informed about the California Business Roundtable measure, the League of California Cities, we did file an amicus brief, in that case, I think replies are due February 14th, and so then, the case should be fully briefed, and the California Supreme Court will then identify an argument date, so, that should be coming up soon. I also attended, I'm on the League Cannabis Regulation Committee with the City Attorney's Department, so we're currently going through and updating our league publication, Seed to Sale, which is on the league website, so, hopefully, we should have that update coming out in the next few months, certainly it should be ready by the annual conference, I think we're planning to present something at the annual conference about that.
Should I have some comment?
Yes, yes, so, that's my update.
Thank you, and our city manager?
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, we just sent out an RFP this week for IT services, as you know, we changed services about six months ago, but just on a temporary contract, kind of an emergency contract, to get us through the first wave, and then, we've sent out an RFP, we'll be starting to get those trickle in in March, and then, we'll, staff will review, and then bring you back a, a full recommendation in April for that, so, just a quick update, Councilmember Hall had asked a few moments ago about the clock, we are going to be replacing the existing clock, unfortunately, that clock was an $800 clock, and not very weather-resistant, and you have to be weather-resistant in this community, or you're not gonna make it, so, but the good news is, the museum has some grant funding, some seed money for about $4,000 to purchase a new clock, so, we want to get a, a one that can sustain the winds and the rain and the other things that we have here as well. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, we finally, finally got a quote this week for the digital sign, and that's, it's good, the numbers, I'm gonna be going back to the person that gave us the quote, and, and kind of going over some of it, and a lot of it depends on whether or not we want a single-side or a double-sided sign, and where we want to put it at in front of City Hall, but I have been in discussion, I was talking to Shar last night, they're, they're gonna be joining in with the efforts, too, she's very positive on that, they have some funding, we've got Crystal Geyser has, has agreed to throw in some money, about 15 grand into the kitty for this, so it's good, so, hopefully within the next month or two, I'll be bringing you a finalized quote, and we can move forward and finally get a clock in front of, or not clock, but a nice digital sign in front of City Hall, so, that's all that happened.
Are we, do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Are we scheduling just one, one digital sign to start off with?
Yeah, so, here's, the, the company, Legacy Signs, has, they're in discussions with a local business owner here in town, I don't know if they want me to say who it is, for another digital billboard, and if that takes place, they're willing to work with us and get, providing us an additional digital sign, so this one would be, the group effort would be here, and then, we would like to put another one out on the Boulevard over by the college, and so, where people, you know, lots of traffic on, on college, I, I saw a location over by the Old Mechanics Bank, there's a lot over there, we'd like to talk to the, the folks that own the lot, maybe do a long-term lease with that piece of land, and, and in exchange for keeping it up as far as mowing and everything else goes, I know, I talked to Chief Duncan, that's one of our frequent flyers, as far as getting notices on the high grass and weeds right there on the other side of Mechanics Bank, so, we'd like to possibly negotiate something with them, and then we'd have one on the Boulevard, and so, I think it'd be a great thing, because what we're wanting to do with this is to promote not only what's going on with the city, what's going on with the chamber, the school system, the college, you know, I, I think it'd be really good, as we've stated before, not everybody has social media, and we do not have, just like there's no audience, we have no newspaper, we have one that is published, but very, very few stories about weed, and that's why we need to probably, because everybody that, especially going back and forth to the school, they drive right by here, so, I mean, we got a captured audience right there, and same thing going with college as well, so.
We also, I'm trying to think that signage, is there any way to get Caltrans to put signage southbound that says, I don't even know if weed is recognized southbound, but weed in College of the Siskus, because there's no signage that says there's a college coming southbound.
We can talk to Caltrans about that.
I mean, there's no introduction to it at all, virtually, until you take the second exit, and it kind of stares you in the face.
Yeah, okay.
But that's it.
We can talk to Caltrans.
I have a question, did you ever get that contact with Greyhound?
Contact, you mean, as far as the news story?
Yeah, I sent you that, that email?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, we, I, I, I sent the stuff to the reporter, I know, yeah, and, they did a news story about Greyhound has been bought out by another outfit, and they're pulling, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, but all the e-stops, a lot of the e-stops are, they're discontinuing.
It wasn't just e-stops, there was some large.
Depots.
Bus depots that they were shutting down as well, so.
It's unfortunate, because some people, you know, utilize Greyhound still, but, we were having a lot of issues down on South Weed with people, I mean, I came in one day, and Justin and those guys were really frustrated, because one of the passengers got off the bus, and the bus took off and left them here, and took their luggage with them, so.
And he was in a wheelchair?
I, I, I don't know if it was.
An electric wheelchair. It's more than one, more than one occasion, and, there's been, you know, disabled people, one, one individual was blind, they left him blind.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's something that is being addressed all over the country right now, because.
Well, that's, well, I assume that was.
Yeah, I think this reporter was out of, was it Minnesota, Minneapolis?
Are we limited in jurisdiction on how, what we can do? In other words, can they just come in and do that without the city's permission?
I'm not sure. What are you asking, what they?
Can they just drop off people, because?
So, what we did is, we were having issues before, when it was in a neighborhood, we did establish bus depot rules.
Right.
So, when they couldn't meet those rules or requirements anymore, they no longer had a point of sale, they just had an e-ticket, which you can buy online, you know, there's, there's nothing that says, says we can't, that they can't get off the highway and stop, the issue they were having was the businesses they were stopping at don't want them on the property, so that, we, we're also dealing with that quite often, there are several of the businesses that do not want the bus on the property.
Yeah, I, I can imagine, because there's a lot of.
And it was almost impossible to get ahold of anybody, the transfer, the email came from LTC, Melissa, and they can't, she can't even get ahold, I mean, it was like, nobody can get ahold of them.
Sounds like the California Fair Plan, anyway.
All right, thank you all for your reports, and now we will adjourn to closed session.
We adjourn to closed session?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Do we need any pencils, papers, crayons?
CalFire might have one.
Okay.